Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public workshop meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Monday, February 28, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Staney, seconded by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The first item on the agenda is under Finance. We have a budget update. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board members. This is another one of those monthly updates that we try to get every month. This is the revenue report for this month. We actually collected $5,254,282, bringing our to-date budget to $89,124,405, which is 75.4% of the total budget. At the same time last year, we had collected $92 million out of 126, which is 72. So, we're about 3 or 4% ahead of where we were at the same time last year. So, and as you can tell, one of the reasons why you see such a small amount of collection versus budget is because the way the cycle goes, and we collect all these taxes in November and December, and then you kind of coast down. So, this is really correct. The $5 million is correct, it's just you can't... This is a straight-line amortization, 12 months' worth of money. So, it's still, we're in good shape as far as the revenues go with the expenditure, with, I'm sorry, with the budget. This is the expenditures report. And again, I'm happy to say that all of our departments have been, you know, keeping a tight rein on their budget, and we are $3,097,000 under budget at this point. At this point, we have spent 55.7% of the budget. Last year, at the same time, we'd spent 56.8. So, we're 1 and 1/2% better there. And again, almost every, I think every one of the actual expenditures versus budgets is less, we've spent less than we actually budgeted at this point. So, again, that's also very good news. This report's getting so long, we can't see the whole thing on it anymore. But this is our SPOSS collections. We normally have our SPOSS collections coming about the next-to-last day or the last day of the month, but because of the weekend, I guess they're going to post it today for the February report, which will be for January. But on here, we have a January collection. And in January, we collected $2,782,942.92. That compared to 2.5 last year at the same time, and the year before that, it was 2.1. So, as you can tell, our SPOSS collection dollars for this month are doing very good, and it brought us up to 93.25% of the total collection. And I decided that since that was so hard to read, I'd print a different page this time, and actually show you a comparison of calendar year 2009 versus calendar year 2010, to show you that we are actually 2.61%... We collected 2.61% more in calendar year 2010 than we did in 2009. And then I threw 2011 on there, because it's starting out pretty good, too. So, I thought I'd show those different things in each month. From here on, we'll bring this sheet, too, and add it on there, so it actually shows the collection amounts, because the other sheet just shows the cumulative collections, so I don't really see the actual collections. That's all I got. I'll take any questions, if you've got any.
I have a quick question. Looking at April and May of 2009, one month at 1.6 million and one month at 3.3, was there some type of difference in the way the state returned funds back to the county to see such a difference in those numbers?
This is where they transferred from paper to, you know, electronic usage, and they basically gave us what was there at a certain point, and then moved over to the new system, and then divided out everything from the new system date forward.
Mr. Staney.
Mike, I'd be quite interested to see how the March numbers come in, because this will be the first time that we've gone into a March without a race, that we had a SPOSS. I'd like to, it's probably going to be a pretty good-sized little bump in that revenue thing.
That'll be the March collections, the race was in March, right?
Right.
So, the collections will be in April and May. So, we'll have to show you what April and May collections, that's what it'll, that's when you'll actually see the collections. So, we'll definitely track that and bring that to your attention when we get it.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Alata?
The grant shortfall, it's not that big, but is that just something that will get caught up, or is that just lack, less grants available this year?
One of the main, we were tracking, let me go back to that page. You can see in January of '09, we were at 100% collection. We were trucking along just like we wanted to, and then all of a sudden, the state changed their system, and we only got 11 checks instead of 12 checks, which is basically one month with a zero revenue, and that knocked us down to that 90, well, 91, 98 to 91. And that's when that, when they changed their system and all that kind of stuff. And what's happened is they were just adjusting it to get it back to where it was supposed to, where we actually, the collections were. I would say that, you know, like I say, right now, we're supposed to be averaging 2.4 million per check, and the checking that we got in January was 2.7. So, that catches up some of that shortfall of this 93% that we're at, so, and that's, you know, we're short, what is that, about $5.5 million. So, we just made up $300,000 of the 5.3. And as long as we continue to do that for the rest of the program, we'll eat away at that deficit, and hopefully, you know, get up to the 180 million.
On the expenditures side, you had indicated all the departments were, Public Works, it appears by this schedule, is over budgeted. Is that, am I looking at that incorrectly?
You are correct. They're over by, what, $55,000. That's due to the budget that we set for them had basically no salary money in there because of that resurfacing that we were doing. And what happened is some of the, I guess, bad weather we had in January, with all the cold weather, they were, had, they had, they couldn't lay asphalt, so they were doing other stuff. So, we just, and we're going to bring you a mid-year budget next, the 14th, or whatever the next Monday meeting is, to adjust those type of things. So, that's something we didn't prepare for, didn't expect to happen. Who knew we'd be at 15 degrees for the whole month of January?
Not a lot, I just wanted to make sure.
And we spent nearly, I think we spent nearly $50,000 or so...
$50,000 or $60,000.
...in salaries for overtime in that snow event. So, a lot of that may be that...
I just want the record to reflect that it was all departments when it states here differently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Alata?
That's it.
Mr. Holder, you had a question?
It was answered.
It was. Anyone else with a question? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is under Technology Services. Presentation of a Plan for the Development of a Public Safety Communications Infrastructure. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, and that's Exhibit Number 1. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Back in October of last year, the Board commissioned a study to be done for a public safety network, which would take advantage of the FCC's ruling back in May 12th, to set aside spectrum in the 700 megahertz range for the next generation of our public safeties network. This would eventually supplant our current radio system at 911, turning it into an all-data system. We engaged Real Broadband LLC. We have Mr. Allen Davis here today to give the presentation. And please, any questions at all, please feel free to ask those, and we'll try to answer those as clearly as we can. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. What I'd like to do is just go through the high-level review of, of course, the plan itself and what the follow-up would be. We've been engaged by the county now for about a year and a half, working on various elements of a broadband project, starting with the fiber project, and last year, saw this opportunity. We took the initiative on behalf of a number of, actually four different jurisdictions in the state of Georgia to file a waiver petition with the FCC, when we saw the availability of both spectrum for mobile broadband, public safety, and grant funding. And of these projects, Henry County is really in the lead because of your location, the cooperation among all the agencies and jurisdictions within the county, and very well-positioned to actually take advantage of this opportunity, which the federal government's created as a result of what happened at, during 9/11, and with Katrina, where the, there was a significant breakdown among the communication support systems to support public safety and first responders' ability to not only communicate, but obtain information. So, we're coming up on the 10th year anniversary of this, and essentially, the plan would call for a network to be developed. And I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and get to the heart of this thing, and this information is in the, in the actual plan itself, and I can go through any of these details relative to exactly where we are. But what I'd like to do is just go straight to the process and talk through the actual FCC came out on May 12th of the last year, granting petitions to 21 petitioners for 700 megahertz spectrum to create mobile broadband networks. If you follow the timeline, we moved immediately to position the state of Georgia to take advantage of this opportunity with these four projects, with Henry County being in the lead. We moved forward with a, this public safety initiative, October the 18th. We were invited to attend a conference in Boulder, to go through this entire opportunity that the federal government is backing and supporting. And, of course, now, we're sitting there with a petition filed with the FCC, and legislation that's on the way through the Senate and the House, which I'm going to talk about for just a minute, to give you the high-level overview of that. But the important thing to make note of here is, when we filed this waiver petition last year, we did not appreciate the significance of this opportunity, and did not really understand how potentially Henry County could be the lead demonstration project in the entire United States to set the precedent on a county-wide basis for a network that the federal government will end up supporting the development of throughout the entire country. A lot of it has to do with our location, a lot of it has to do with the initiative that we were already in the process of developing. But more importantly, we have what I'm calling our Fiber First approach here, where we have infrastructure specked out to support public safety already, and the spectrum, it was all we really needed to actually move forward, plus potential grant funding. And so, with those in place, as confirmed by the Deputy Director of Homeland Security with the FCC, FCC attorneys that we've consulted with, Henry County could very well be the lead project in the country for this initiative. In support of this, we have Senate Bill 28, which was introduced recently, provides $11 billion in grant funding for network construction and operations. The first tranche of money is supposed to be available by October the 1st. And in addition to the capital, there's also going to be spectrum made available for both additional public safety support and commercial use. We have a similar piece of legislation in the House, HR 607, with the same numbers and the same basic important elements, $11 billion to support construction operations, additional spectrum. And these bills not only have bipartisan support, but are also very strong support from the White House. So, it looks very favorable in terms of these bills being passed very soon. And it also looks very favorable for Henry County and this project to be well-positioned to receive grant funding, to actually capitalize the infrastructure. Again, the FCC, Homeland Security, federal government is looking for a project in a service territory like Henry County to help kick this thing off. And initially, it will be funded through grant proceeds, through legislation, with the money actually coming from spectrum auctions, where the FCC is going to auction additional licenses to wireless service providers. That money would be invested here in this county, and then additional counties, which would qualify and support the platform the FCC is trying to promote. At some point, then, it would become a national mandate, so other counties and states in the United States would have to follow with the same platform to create a nationwide The budget for the, the public safety side of this is $15 million. A lot of this investment is in core, what we call core infrastructure, which theoretically could support the entire state of Georgia, or even the southeastern region. As you can appreciate, this, setting up a network for a 322-square-mile county is going to require certain network elements that could support a much larger region. But you have to have those network elements, the way it's structured now, and the way that the, the technology is actually being deployed. You have to have those very core network elements to support this, whether we have one user or 300,000. So, the important thing to make note of here is that the investment coming in would also support potentially the state of Georgia, which would position us well here as being a hub for a much larger service territory. All right, we have several conclusions through the plan and through our work on this that I'd like to mention, and I know there's a lot of information here, but I'm going to summarize them. As I mentioned, we could set the example here. They, the FCC, Deputy Director of Homeland Security, acknowledging the significance of the Henry County project, has asked us to get the state involved at some level in supporting us. So, at some point, we're going to need to do that with your help, and it's something that they're requiring nationwide. We have the legislation in place, as I mentioned, with bipartisan support, and with the grant funding, obviously, the project then becomes achievable and feasible. So, the next steps are, receive our petition, approval from the FCC, continue to track this legislation, and then, once the legislation is enacted into law, move forward with grant application, seek funding, and develop the project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one quick question. And for someone who's probably not as knowledgeable as I should be about fiber, we have some issues in the north end of our county, specifically in the 5th District, where currently, our police officers cannot use their radios. It's like a dead zone. And I'm assuming, because DeKalb County, and probably Rockdale County, or Newton or kind of in that same area, they may be experiencing the same problems, which is a public safety issue, when officers are not able to use their radios to keep in contact. Will this address that?
It will. First of all, the requirements are that 100% of the county and every service territory have coverage. The preliminary design, which we have already completed, has 100% coverage throughout the entire county, and so, the infrastructure would be installed to support that coverage. And so, it's not only something that we've, we've done relative to our preliminary design in terms of how we've laid this out, but it's mandated by the legislation that's being enacted, and also by the FCC rules that will then govern the actual operation of the system. So, that is an extremely important point, and it's something that is, one of the, one of the reasons why this initiative is being supported so strongly, because there are so many areas of our country which are not currently supported right now, where first responders simply don't have network connectivity. So, this, this plan will solve that problem as well.
Anyone else with a question? Mr. Holder?
Mr. Davis, as far as the funding, as far as the grant funding, is that federal, state, combined? And we're talking about billions, and I know we're all facing, from Washington down, budget crunches and shortfalls. Can you elaborate a little bit on, I know that, in theory, they may support it, but are they actually going to support it with money?
It's all federal-funded grant money. The money is actually going to be first appropriated from the Department of Treasury on October the first 2011. The first $2 billion will come in. That money is going to be repaid from future spectrum auctions, where the FCC is going to sell additional licenses to the commercial sector. Various wireless providers would have an interest in buying that spectrum. And then, so ultimately, all $11 billion for the development of the networks, and they're actually covering 50% of the operating costs as well for a period of time, all that money is going to ultimately come from the commercial sector, through the purchase of the spectrum and the sale by the FCC.
Mr. Alata?
I noticed Verizon on this last, where do they fit into this? Is that, I don't understand the schedule, obviously, but it has Verizon at the top. Are they part of this program, or in partnership with them, or how's that the reason for Verizon being on this schedule?
Verizon actually bought that piece of spectrum. That diagram at the top is actually a visual representation of some of the spectrum that we're talking about. And the two pieces in circles are actually the piece that's been devoted to public safety. The pieces that say Verizon are actually owned, and they were bought in a previous auction by Verizon.
And it's important to make note, since you've mentioned this, that one of the requirements is that there be cooperation between the public safety agencies and the commercial service providers, so that in the event of a significant situation, the standards are the same, so that a public safety network requirement, to that degree, would allow them to encroach over into the commercial space, to adjacent spectrum, to actually use the commercial spectrum. And Verizon Wireless is significant, because they're the only service provider in the United States that has a nationwide license. And so, they're deploying this throughout the entire country with the same standards and platform that we've specked out in this particular project, and as required by the FCC. So, there's going to be public-private cooperation in this whole initiative, as required by the legislation and by the rules?
One of the problems that we have today in public safety, and why we kind of have the situation where we do, where Henry County can't talk to the DeKalb County, or Fulton County, or Clayton County, we have different radio systems. We were sold different radio systems by the providers, and they like to sell us proprietary systems, which are not the same. They don't have the same standards and the same requirements from county to county. It's basically, everybody has been given the option to go out and buy whatever you thought was, you know, best suited for your community. What the FCC is saying is that, in the overall best interest of public safety across the board, is that we need to have a set of standards out there. And why not use the same standards as the commercial sector are using for this next generation? You hear it, it's often called 4G, 5G maybe, of cell service. But the standards are already out there, the technology is there. Right now, it's really not a problem of technology, it's more of a legislative issue, I guess. It's more of a willpower issue.
And the previous schedule you have at the bottom, I think it's previous schedule? Go back one more, I guess. It was, it was actually a cost schedule, where you had the $15 million. There you go. It has 56 towers. Would these be new towers in Henry County?
One of the neat things about this actual platform is that the locations could be, the equipment could actually be installed on top of a building. It could be an existing tower. It could be a monopole. There are lots of different ways that you could engineer this, to come, to provide you with the coverage and the actual throughput you need. So, just to give us something to work from, we took the existing towers that are in Henry County, and worked from that schedule to come up with a preliminary design, so we can come up with a budget. Now, when it comes to actually physically installing the equipment, we're going to look at every possible option out there relative to where this equipment may go, and every possible design option. One unique one that's being actually introduced now is where you, through fiber, you, you don't have a base station, that you'd normally have at a cell site. And you could have radio, literally, radio antennas located in all different types of locations, where all you have is that radio transmitter at the site, and you don't have any other equipment there. So, the fact is, 56 tower sites in Henry County will cover it. The actual location will determine where we can find the lowest-cost access, and the, and of course, it also fits in with our engineering design, to give us 100% coverage.
And since this is with all the government institutions you mentioned, Henry County, would the buildings that Henry County have be tall enough to go ahead and put these towers on, or these, what you're talking about, to avoid having to lease monthly somebody's property?
They would, and the, the design could actually vary from 56 to many more smaller locations. You know, they might look like one of the little antennas that are hanging up in this room, that you can't hardly even see. But more of those, versus, you know, a few large, tall towers. In general, that's, that's one of the neat things about LTE, is that you can use a lot more, like small antennas possibly located on telephone poles, or attached to buildings, or even in mobile units. You know, each police car may individually become its own mini-cell site as well. The 56, I believe, we took just from the existing cell sites that are located in Henry County already. So, we wouldn't be building any additional towers. I mean, I don't think the 56 includes the county's five sites that we have with the current radio network, which we'd also, you know, want to take advantage of.
Well, and we, of course, we built a database of all the existing tower sites, and it, with that database, we had the latitude, longitude, so we had the location, we had the height, we had all the details we needed to bring that into a preliminary design, to get our budget number nailed down. So, again, when it comes to the final design, there'll be, there'll be a lot of work done relative to site locations and so forth, and it'll, it'll all depend on what is, obviously, in the best interest of the county, in terms of giving you 100% coverage, but then, what's also the most cost-effective, efficient way to locate the radios.
Just curious, last question. I'm just curious, where did you, or how did you derive this list of towers that are in the county? Who?
It's public information we got from the FCC.
FCC.
Every one of those towers is registered, and so, we have a database of all the towers in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Holder?
Would these 56 towers be required to have our current $1,000 annual registration fee?
I don't think anything changes on the commercial side.
But that's $56,000 a year...
Sure.
...that's going to be for our annual fee, so...
I don't think we're talking about changing that at all. What we're talking about is potentially using the commercially available towers for our own public safety network.
I understand, but if you're using them, and they're required to pay that $1,000 registration fee, guess who's going to pay it?
There is, there are a lot of negotiations that'll have to go on with those tower owners, I'm sure, in various ways to where we can share service. We may be supplying them with...
I understand, and we're going to pay them sooner or later. If we charge them, we're going to end up paying, correct?
I don't know.
Well, keep this in mind, too. I mean, since we're on this line of discussion, every single license holder that has a license for this new, this new technology is going to be installing new radios here in Henry County. And the lead service providers are AT&amp;T Wireless and Verizon Wireless. So, those companies are going to be actually installing the same technology here in this county, as they are throughout the entire state. So, the idea is, there may be an opportunity to actually use their existing equipment to actually support the public safety side after it's installed, because it's the same standard, same platform, it's just a matter of segregating the spectrum for public safety within that equipment that'll support this much spectrum. So, there's a lot yet that's going to have to be determined and figured out relative to where and how, but the bottom line is, of course, there's going to be this platform out there, developed by the commercial side, and there's going to be the public safety mobile broadband platform as well. They're both going to be out there. And again, if we take the lead here and establish Henry County as a precedent-setting countywide mobile broadband platform for the country, then we'll be in the lead. If ultimately, the federal government comes back and says, "You're going to have to do it," we're going to be out there anyway. So, this is not something that's going to be, it's a matter of if, it's a matter of actually when and how. actually when and how.
Mr. Holmes.
The majority of the 56 towers, are they owned by Verizon?
They're owned by all different types of service providers. And it's really, most of them are owned by private companies that lease to wireless carriers.
And they're not even owned by one of the names you would recognize. They're owned by a separate company that their whole job is to go out and build towers and lease space on them.
And I assume that we've gotten proposals from multiple telecommunications companies?
There wouldn't be one required in this case. The county would be developing its own private network.
Okay.
We have specked out the equipment and that sort of thing, that it would take to run the system, though, and that's, you know, indicated there as a.
And of course, anything the county would buy would be, would actually be acquired through the county's normal processes and request for proposal and so forth. And it's not, you know, certainly, you would comply with the normal county purchasing requirements, but because there would be federal grant money involved, you also have to comply with the federal rules and regs, which speak to the same types of processes.
Mr. Steny.
Clark. The 56 towers that you're talking about, are you actually using 168 antennas? Because you drop down, you see the number 168, and it looks like there's 168 antennas.
Actually, when you start looking at the actual design at the tower site, there are multiple antennas on each site to give you a 360-degree radius. So it, you know, I can show you all the detailed engineering specs on the actual radios themselves in terms of how they broadcast, but it's one installation per tower site.
Well, I'm just wondering if that 56,000 is actually 168,000 of a new fee that we just imposed? Because it's.
If you look at the center, the top center picture is a, you know, picture of a cell tower, and they mostly are three-sided designs.
Correct.
With the antennas, you know, facing in all directions.
Is that what it's, let's say, per antenna or per tower?
It is per tower. I believe it's per antenna, because if there is multiple antennas on one tower in terms of co-locations, then each provider will have to pay that registration fee.
Here's the question, though, is that each provider's probably putting three to six antennas per tower. Now, whether they call that one antenna or three or six antennas, it's, you know, a matter of schematics, I guess.
And depending on the structural integrity of the tower, there is a maximum number of antennas that can be placed on a tower. So not every tower has the capacity to have.
I can go ahead and tell you, we've put up a couple of these antennas ourselves, doing some internal stuff, and each one of them, you know, it's about this tall, but it weighs less than three pounds. I mean, they're not big, heavy items to go on a big, you know, steel tower structure.
Alan, the reason I'm saying that is, when we first started this proposal with you, it's been going on now probably, what, 18 months, close to 18 months?
No, that's not accurate. This started in October.
Okay, I thought you were here before that.
I was. We actually developed a fiber plan for the county.
Because the new fee that we're talking about, who's going to eat that fee? Because it wasn't even in place when your proposal first came to us, of $1,000 up to $1,000. And is it going to be passed through to us, will it be passed through to the provider? Or are you going to absorb it as you put it in? If it actually got put in?
Well, again, it all depends on who the actual entity is that has the tower, antennas on the tower.
I would have another way of, I think, answering your question. Do we currently pay fees for our 901 towers and their radios?
Correct.
We do on our own towers that we own for our own 901 system. I mean, if we do, I'm assuming we would do the exact same thing, and we would treat this system just like we do today's 901 radio system, in terms of those fees and how you structure that. And that's, you know, up to the board on how you set those fees.
Mr. Alley.
I mean, 15 million, you mentioned auctions are going to pay for the $11 billion that the government would be putting out there by the auctions themselves. And the 15 million, I take it, is coming from those billions?
That's correct.
In putting this up and selling whatever they're selling in these auctions to get that money, does that mean we're getting one of these licenses as part of this process? Or is the license we're owning going to be sold through this auction process as well?
Well, first of all, we have a waiting petition from the FCC, which gives the county 10 megahertz of 700-megahertz spectrum. So that petition has already been filed, the request has already been made, and we feel it's going to be granted. As part of the legislation, there'll be another 10-megahertz of spectrum that's going to be made available for public safety. So that will give the county 20 megahertz of spectrum.
Pay for that in an auction?
No. There's a $15,000 administrative fee that has to be paid to the Public Safety Spectrum Trust, and the county will have to pay that. But the reason I mentioned the auction is, that's the source of funding for the grant program.
But they're getting something for it, and I just want to make sure that what we're getting to do this isn't something that later is going to be auctioned, so they can get their money back to pay for it.
This is, this will work very similar to how we actually, we get spectrum allotted to us today from the 800-megahertz range, also in the 4.9 range, that we use for current public safety needs through our 901 system. This is a different spectrum, or a different piece of the spectrum, if you want, in 700-megahertz range.
I heard last year, and it may not relate, but I heard last year that when there was a discussion of fiber optic or whatever in the county and proposal and so on, I thought I heard a figure somewhere between $10 and $12 million to do this. Maybe it was 15, maybe it was 10.
Let's make very clear that there are two different projects.
That's what I wanted to ask, if it's two different.
There are two separate projects. The project that you're referring to was our fiber build project. And I won't speak in depth about that today, but we think that that's actually going to be done by the private sector.
Okay. And this is something totally different?
This is something totally different.
Okay. I just want to make sure, my understanding.
This is actually a wireless overlay to enable mobile broadband for first responders, and so that police department, sheriff's department, fire department can have video in their vehicles, can have all kinds of mobile broadband applications to help support them in their ability to protect lives of citizens.
And most importantly is that it creates an interoperable platform for which, you know, the national standard's being set, so that we can talk to neighboring agencies. And so that, for instance, if we have a sheriff's department warrant officer that needs to travel across the state to serve a warrant, you know, outside of Henry County, they can still do that and still have radio communications when they travel beyond the higher Henry County's radio system today.
One of the first scheduled things you put up there had a list of Henry County entities, and I thought I saw the Chamber of Commerce up there. How do they fit into this particular proposal? Or is that, did I miss something there? There was many others on there, but there it is.
Right. The reason I mention this is that Henry County's in a unique position by having broad-based support for the overall broadband initiative. And there's been support by the four cities in the county and by many other county groups and organizations through this entire process, which now, if you talk about, if you go back and talk about the fiber element of this, this has been going on about a year and a half now, so.
But is this group on that fiber proposal, or is this group for the present proposal you're talking about?
Certainly on the fiber proposal. And let me say this.
So this has nothing to do with what later came in the presentation? This group here?
This group, well, all of the government entities in this group certainly have been involved in our process. All the public safety entities have been involved with the process, talking about 700-megahertz LTE project for public safety. This group, I think Alan probably had taken from the previous project, but let me say this, too, that the towers, you know, with the 56 towers, or if it turns out to be more towers or whatever, they rely on having a backhaul with fiber, have to have that to work. If you aggregate too many people to one antenna at a time, that information still has to get back to our core network or to the internet somehow. And without fiber, there's, you end up with a huge bottleneck at the tower.
So this project that you're talking about cannot be done until the first project is done?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and there's one other important thing to mention here, and that is the legislation that's being, that's been presented in the Senate and the House, also allows the same spectrum that was initially specked out for public safety use and the same network platform to be used for utility operations. So the water department could use it, the schools could use it, every single entity in this list could also use the same network. So public safety would be given first priority, but it'd also be available for other government utility use as well.
What's unique about it, too, is that we can do what's called quality of service. We can do, we can basically set, you know, the police's priority on the network higher than, let's say, a utility worker or a DOT worker, for instance. It's because it's routable traffic, because it's IP-based, it's data-driven, and you can set priorities on data, where you can't do that today with the analog signals that we use.
Anyone else? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Member of the commission.
Ms. County Clerk, anyone sign up for public comment? County manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney, anyone?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events tomorrow, March 1st at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular commission meeting. March 14th at 9:00 a.m. and March 15th at 6:30 p.m., these are regular meetings. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the, for potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
Come on.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Alletta. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Come on.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. At this time, we need to amend the agenda for an item. Mr. Holder?
Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda and get a motion to approve an agreement regarding certain real property located at Land Lot 218 of the 2nd District of Henry County and to authorize the chairman to execute the document.
Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Say.
Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. We stand adjourned.